We are gonna call this the end order at seven thirty. Please rise to the flag to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we're gonna move on to roll call. Roland?
Here.
Bizzer?
Here.
Bellinger?
Here.
Wise?
Here.
Ryan's?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And next on our agenda, we have approval of agenda. Do you have any changes or amendments to the agenda this morning? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll support it.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have election of mayor and mayor pro temp. Right now, I will take nominations for mayor.
I will nominate Tammy Gilroy for mayor.
That was supported.
And then we'll do a roll call vote. Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, you're quick to give that.
She does such a good job, though. She uses it on her toes. All right, thank you very much. And now I will enter, I will look for a nomination for our mayor pro temp for this next year.
I'd like to make a motion to add Mr. Bizzer.
And Mayor Pro Temp?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm looking for a roll call, Holly.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Glad you didn't say no. Thank you.
All right, moving right along. We have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. All right. We'll continue moving along. We've got the council meeting minutes for November 25th that have been submitted. If nobody has any changes or amendments that they need to make, I'm looking for approval.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Noah, we have accounts payable for this evening.
I've had a chance to review all the accounts payable. I'm gonna have Cory address one issue on check 72600 before I make a motion for approval.
The Tetra Tech?
Yep. It's the WWF. Yeah, it's quite important to be.
Thank you very much. So this check, we're asking that it be approved as part of this. There is a slight mix-up in the payment of it where we paid the remaining balance on the contract as opposed to the invoice amount. So we've already been in the process of getting a credit or reimbursement for that. But we just want to bring that to your attention.
Okay.
So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve checks 72582 through 72606 in a total dollar value of $112,202.52.
Thank you, Noah. Any other questions regarding any of the other checks? All right, made a motion?
Second.
All right, thank you. All right, Holly, would you call the roll?
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we have our fiscal year 2018-2019 audit presentation by Roslyn, Mustaj, and Kumi. Thank you.
No, thank you for having me tonight.
Yes.
I provided for tonight a board presentation or board packet. These are selected pages out of the full audit report that I wanted to cover with you to see if you have any questions on what we'll cover tonight or anything out of the full audit report. Just let me know.
Great, thank you.
The first two pages are one of two letters that our firm includes with the financial statements of the city of Williamson. This is the opinion letter titled "The Independent Auditor's Report." It first talks about the financial statements that were audited. Then it talks about management's responsibility for those financial statements. Then it talks about our responsibilities, the auditor's responsibilities. And then it goes right into the opinion, which I highlighted toward the bottom. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." That's also known as an unqualified opinion or a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can provide. On the next page, I've highlighted wording toward the bottom. "Other reporting required by government auditing standards." In accordance with government auditing standards, we have also issued our report dated November 7th on our consideration of internal control over financial reporting and uncompliance. That's the second letter we provide. That's typically at the back of the audit report. And it's also at the back of this board packet. We'll cover that in a little bit. The next page is the balance sheet for governmental funds. We have required to list the major funds first. That's determined by size. We list all of those individually. And all of those that don't meet the requirements to be considered to be major are combined and included in the non-major governmental funds. The major funds for the city of Williamson as of June 30, 2019 were the general fund, major street fund, and local street fund. On the balance sheet, we list the assets first, liabilities after that. Those are amounts that you owe to others. And the difference between those two is fund balance. Toward the bottom, you'll see that the general fund ended the year with a fund balance of $1.4 million. And I've identified for you, that's approximately 70% of annual expenditures of the general fund. That's over eight months of reserves that you're holding in the general fund. I do want to point out that fund balances can be broken out into various categories. Non-spendable are items that are not in spendable form. That's the prepaid expenditures you see up at the top there. Restricted is items that are restricted by a third party. And then unassigned is items that are available for operations of the general fund. You have a significant unassigned balance. You do have the option as a board to carve out a portion of that for intended purposes and note that on your financial statements. I would encourage you to consider to do that, given the size of your unassigned fund balance. The board can carve out whatever amount you deem necessary. Of course, you can't take the unassigned into a negative amount. But if you feel that you want to set aside a portion of that for bond payments or anything of that nature, you can show the public that you have intended purposes for a portion of that unassigned balance. And what those categories of fund balance are and the level at which that has to be done is included in the notes. The next page is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. Again, we have to list the major funds individually and the non-major funds together. We list the revenues first by source, expenditures after that by category, then other financing sources and uses, which are typically transfers between those funds. To come down to a net change in fund balances, which I've logged off for you. For the general fund, you added $94,000 to the fund balance. Major Street added $35,000. And Local Street added $39,000. This next page and the page after that is the detail on the non-major funds. Wanted to show you that we do include detail in the report on the non-major funds. This page 46 is the combining balance sheet. Looks a little funny. There's really no activity in there. But we are required to list the assets, liabilities, and fund balance if there were any. The next page is where the activity happens for these non-major funds. And that is the actual payment of principal and interest on the debt for the Act 175 bond debt and Act 342 bond debt. I boxed off the total columns there. Those total columns are what go onto the other two pages that we covered. The next page, which is page 7 of the report, is the statement of net position for proprietary funds. Proprietary funds are treated more like a business. It's where you charge someone a fee for providing a service. There are two enterprise funds, the sewer fund, the water fund. And there is also an internal service fund. An internal service fund is a little different. Doesn't charge a third party. It charges the other funds for services. On the statement of net position or balance sheet, we list the assets first. Deferred outflows, liabilities, deferred inflows. And then the difference between those is net position. Sewer fund ended with a net position of $7.2 million. Water fund ended with a net position of $2.7 million. The next page, page 8, statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position or an income statement for those proprietary funds. Operating revenues are listed first, then expenses. We have to carve out those items that are not considered operating income or revenues and expenses after that. And then we come down to a change in net position for those funds. The sewer fund reduced the net position by $46,000. Water fund added to the net position about $4,000. Internal service added to its net position $114,000. These next two pages, balance sheet and income statement for the component units. There are four component units of the city of Williamson. Economic Development Corporation, TIPA 2A, TIPA 2B, and then DDA. I have to make sure that you saw that there is detailed information on those as well. That's the income statement and the balance sheet. And then all of that information is combined and put onto page 1 of the financial statements, which is next. And I wanted to show here that under the governmental activities column, that actually includes the general fund, major street, local street, the two non-major funds, plus the internal service fund. That's all put together into the governmental activities column. And it takes that information from a short-term basis, which is how it's reported on the other statements we covered, and converts it to a long-term basis. So it includes all of the information in those funds plus long-term assets, which would be your capital assets, plus long-term liabilities, which are some of the bond payable information plus the net pension liability. Toward the bottom, you'll see that that net pension liability is the largest liability here for the governmental activities. That's currently at $1.1 million. And then the net other post-employment benefit liability below that. And then the next page is the income statement for all of those funds together. Looks a little different. The last page of the board packet is the second letter that our firm includes with the financial statements of the city of Williamson. Again, this is a report on internal control over financial reporting and uncompliance. So it discusses internal control over financial reporting in one portion of the letter. And I've highlighted wording in that paragraph or in that section. During our audit, we did not identify deficiencies in internal control that we considered to be material weaknesses. And below that, under compliance, I've highlighted that the results of our test disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that we're required to communicate with you. So if we during our audit found some issues that rose to the level of at which we're required to discuss that with you, you find those in that letter if there are any issues, which is good. There's a lot of information to cover in your report. This is just a city ID story. Do you have any questions?
If we have any particular questions about a particular item, do you want us to address those to the city manager at a later date?
You can do that. You can talk with city treasurer as well. We work closely with her during the audit. You can certainly call our office. We'd be happy to discuss with you what we can.
Okay.
I would think that we probably want to funnel those through Rachel and Cory. And if there are some concerns, then they can reach out and get those answers from you.
The report currently is in draft form. Once we have approval from the board to finalize the report, we will then finalize it and send it up to treasury. It is required to be submitted to treasury by the end of December.
All right. Great, thank you so much. It's always a pleasure when you come and lay everything out for us. And you do such a great job. And we're so happy that you provide that service for us. Thank you. All right, moving along. We'll head right into our action items. We have a couple for this evening. First is the first reading of the ordinance to amend the city of Williamson zoning ordinance to revise Article 8 as to sign regulations and Article 12 as to sign definitions. And I can say that Planning has done a fantastic job working on this. And so I'll just turn this right over to Cory.
All right, thank you very much. So at the December 3 Planning Commission meeting, there was a vote to recommend these changes to the city council. It was a two-month process, actually three months if you include the vote and the public hearing. So essentially, what the changes accomplish are two-fold. So there are changes based on a U.S. Supreme Court case decision that deals with content-based regulations. So today, our ordinance talks about a variety of different signs that you can't regulate unless you read it. So it's a political sign, an opinion sign, anything that you have to actually read it to tell what it is. Those types of regulations are now, we're advised to take those out of the ordinance because they're unenforceable. So the first review focused on those changes. That is a large portion of the red lines that you see throughout that document. And then the second part, which we spent our November meeting discussing, were more of the discretionary changes that are within the purview of planning in the city council to change. So the memo describes a couple of the key ones that we looked at. Just very briefly, we did some changes to our ground sign regulations, our materials, our window signage, and a couple other small ones. There were some other areas that we looked at, such as illumination in the downtown that ultimately the Planning Commission decided not to change. So with that, we held a public hearing at the December meeting. We did not have any formal comments submitted either before or during that meeting. And so this is the next step to have council conduct the first reading today. And then your second reading, if approved tonight, would be at your first meeting in January. And then it becomes effective so many days after approval.
And I think I want to just kind of back up to a little bit. And this kind of all stemmed from your ZVA meeting because we had some, someone requesting variants. It was Old Nation regarding their signage. And that's what really kind of brought this forward. So I think because of that, the good work that was done at ZVA, moved it on to planning, planning was able to take it. And I really have to say thank you so much, Tim, and to Cory for really putting this together, making it very easy to understand because I'm technical for those Planning Commission meetings. And I think our commissioners did a fantastic job getting this put together so that we could have it this evening. Go ahead and ask. I know you got some questions.
I know at the DDA meeting, this last one, you was there.
Right.
Cory, you were out. But they talked about some sort of LED sign to try to put at the four corners or somewhere in town for, to inform the public about coming, things like that. That obviously a backlit signs that's kind of eliminate something like that. And I can see that coming back. And then again, us having to either review is that at Planning Commission level, but look at it again. Because I know when I sat on Planning Commission, we talked about it one time.
Right. We discussed illumination specifically in the downtown district. And there was not a desire to change those regulations. Primarily, you know, when you think about the core downtown, once you get beyond, let's say, Seshuan Garden, you know, even though you're still in the downtown C1 district, the field changes a little bit. You have buildings that are set back. And so most of those businesses in that district over the years have gone through a variance process to try to get their corporate branded signs. And the commission felt that was the best way to go on that particular issue. So I was out sick for that DDA meeting, so I wasn't, I didn't get the whole gist of the discussion. But I think that it was planned to bring it forward as another discussion item. I think there's a resident that is interested in that and has been for a number of years.
They also said they might want to tell the Planning Commission. That was crazy.
Sure.
I don't know if it ever happened or not.
Right. I guess I would just, I would look forward with the DDA to share some of my own observations having worked in a community that had one of those. And maybe the pros and cons of doing that. And then see where it goes.
I think even, it goes even one step further. In the current sign ordinance that we have before us, than just the backlit, it's any electronically changeable signs, I think, are currently prohibited. And honestly, I'm in favor of, I pushed relaxing a lot of this, but right in the downtown area, big, you know, scrolling, electronic sign, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, you know, when it was at People State Bank with the old signage that they had, that was great because it wasn't directly downtown. And it was just the one single line. And you know, that's changed over the years and everything. I don't think I would really be in favor of having a scrolling sign.
Well, we talked about that kind of at the DDA, that, you know, maybe the park or, you know, car wash lot or somewhere.
Yeah.
Further, other than right downtown.
Not directly downtown. I just don't think that's a...
I know, you know, as the sign ordinance itself, states that they are both.
So I think today, you can have a digital sign. But I believe the limitation is it can only change messages once an hour.
Yeah.
That is what it says.
So this does not change anything.
Right.
I misquoted that. That is what it... My, sorry, John, were you...
No. I said that could probably be a matter of a few times.
How would a barber pole or a small light outside? Because that was not...
Right. Yeah, you guys were talking about that with a spinning barber pole, lighted barber pole. And we did, we relaxed it. I mean, not me personally, but the Planning Commission relaxed it quite a bit with percentage of window being used. Really, not a limitation. And I mean, Gene, you're on planning, and the commissioners all seem to think that this language moving forward was...
Yeah, it was a consensus that limiting percentages was really just something we wanted to step back from and just let the business owner kind of handle that on their own. Knowing that if you're going to block out all the windows or you're probably going to also kill your business.
Right.
It's going to kind of be probably a self-managing thing. But now we're not in the position of going and figuring out square inches and percentages. And by you're going to have to remove that line off of yours, you know, that's not going to be occurring.
Right, like what happened with Wild Tattoo.
Right. I thought one of the other big ones you guys did was in changing, allowing different building materials other than what's already matching the building. So then people can, you know, still get a good-looking sign, but maybe not as expensive as the sign as was required before. I thought that was a big change. There's a lot of new materials that are out there now that are not traditional sign materials, but are vastly improved. My one question, I was looking Section H here on page 154. It's the automobile service and commercial signs. With, all of this was basically removed. And the only thing I can think of is I know Admiral has that sandwich board sign that they use outside for advertising things. Now with removing line item 1 under H, is that now non-permissible?
No, so that would be allowed under our A-frame sign section. The reason that this automobile service signage was deleted is because it's a content-based regulation. So again, if you have to identify it based on the type of business other than just like a broad category, like commercial, non-commercial, we have to take that out. But we still have the A-frame sign language, which I think is working for the most part.
Makes sense.
Any other questions for Cory? Or for Gene, who was on the commission? Okay, then Holly, will you call the roll?
I have a motion, yeah.
Oh, my new motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend the city of Williamson zoning ordinance to revise Article 8 as to sign regulations and Article 12 as to sign definitions.
Thank you, Noah.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roland?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, so second reading will come up at our meeting in January. And if anything else comes up before that, please reach out to Cory regarding any questions you have. All right, next on our action item list, we have the resolution adopting our 2020 meeting dates and times. And I did notice that because of Memorial Day, we do have the Tuesday meeting, May 26. It's Holly.
There's one typo, April 17 to May, or April 27.
Okay, April 27, thank you. So everybody will know that on their schedule as well as the 27th. Did anyone else see anything that may not work as far as the schedule? I think they took into consideration all of the major holidays. And it doesn't look like anything really falls close to or on, with the exception of Memorial Day. All right, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt 2020 meeting date times with the change of April 17 to April 27 in the hard copy.
Thank you. Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Ryne?
Yes.
Rollin?
Yes.
All right, moving on, we have the 2020 cost of living wage increase. Cory.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So as we get to the end of the year, this is the time of year, like last meeting, we dealt with health insurance. This meeting, we've got the request for a 2% cost of living adjustment wage increase for all city employees. That would be effective January 1st. Essentially, when I look at this, I look at both our budget as well as what inflation is doing. And so the memo talks about some of those factors. The other thing that's interesting is we do operate in a union environment. We have a DPW union and a police officers' union. And both of those contracts state that any wage increases are tied to a non-union wage increase, which in my experience is fairly rare to have that. And I look at that as hopefully a sign of trust that the employer has with our unions. So with that, you know, I am recommending a 2% increase. That would be effective with the next, I mean, with the January 1st, 2020. And that would apply across the board for our non-union and our two unions.
Questions? And Noah, I know you spoke about something earlier.
I have various questions with Cory relating to our contract with the school district and our crossing guards.
Right. So Noah had asked me because this would also cover our two crossing guards. We do have an agreement with the schools that pays, that reimburses the city for some of those costs. So even with a 2% raise, the dollar amount that is passed back from the school district still makes us...
Good, excellent. Any other questions for Cory regarding this? Good work, thank you very much. With that being said, I'm looking for a motion to move this forward.
I make a motion to approve cost of living adjustment of 2% for all city employees effective January 1, 2020.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll? Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Ryne?
Yes.
Rollin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, our last action item for this evening is the appointment of Bruce Bellinger to the Economic Development Corporation, TIPA 2A, TIPA 2B, for a term that expires 6/30/2023. And just to note, in case you've not checked the different boards, but he is also serving on ZVA with a term that will expire 2021. So it's great that he's looking to add to his repertoire of service to the community.
Motion to appoint Bruce Bellinger to Economic Development Corporation, TIPA 2A, TIPA 2B, for terms that expire 6/30/2023.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, will you call the roll, Holly? Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Ryne?
Yes.
Rollin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Great, that concludes our action items for this evening. We do not have any discussion items. We did receive correspondence with the annual report from Friends of the Williamson Park, which, as you all know, they did complete the Volunteers Park project this summer. And it looks like their next focus is going to be working on Phase 2 of the Volunteers Community Parkmaster Plan. And then also working on keeping up with McCormick Park upkeep and managing the little free library and student cat lot. So they do a lot of good work here in our community, and we're thankful that we have them. We also received the NESA minutes of the November 14th, 2019 meeting for you to read. And if you do have any questions, you can always express those questions to either Councilman Wise or Councilman Bellinger. With that, I'll move right through to our department head reports. And Cory, is there anything you'd like to add yours?
I have nothing further.
All right, Chief?
I do?
Yes, let's hear it.
Yes, it's been a good week in the community. The people were generous with the power food. They filled the Humvee three and a half times. And then they were very generous with cash donations. And Jill Kuchal was in today because they continue to bring stuff to the police department over the weekend, just how needy that the community is and even the food bank. And so they were very, very appreciative. And then the second thing was our officers delivered baskets to no senior without Christmas in the community. So we got a lot of very well-to-do people in the community, but some that really need in the community. And so that was kind of highlight of our week.
Good, excellent. Well, thanks for sharing that. I know I was down at DNW, and the Humvee was quite full. So that's always good to see. And people were also pulling out their wallets. And that was even better to see. Because I know the dollar goes much farther, which Jill has shared in different service meetings when she goes and speaks. So it's great to know that we've got a community that will come out and help support the food bank. All right, I'm going to move right along then to our committee, subcommittee reports. Has anybody attended a meeting recently? I know we just talked about planning and what was going on there. Anyone else have a meeting that they want to share about? We're coming to the end of the year. All right. We're going to go ahead and move right along then to audience participation, which there's nobody in the audience for our last meeting of the year. So we'll move along to council member comments. And I'll go ahead and start down at this end with Mr. Wise.
I just want to recognize Rachel. We heard about our independent financial audit report. And as always, she worked very hard, prepared for that, so welcome.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Smith.
I think I have to.
Okay. Mr. Rollin, your first counsel?
None for me either.
All right.
Thanks.
Mr. Ryne?
I just want to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce. We're putting on a great light parade again this year. I know they worked very hard and did a great job. Everyone was down there, seemed to have a really good time. And they did a great job again this year.
Mr. Bizzer?
I just have no comments, but one question. The audit report, she said we need to approve by the beginning of the year. Are we okay if we don't have another meeting this month to do that?
Generally, there isn't an actual approval of the audit.
Or adoption or whatever.
She's generally, she'll present to you. I'll email her tomorrow and say, please move forward with some evidence of the state.
Okay, oh, that's it.
All right. Mr. Bellinger?
Another great event that happened, it was breakfast with Santa. And it was a great turnout for that. So that was wonderful. And then dudos and compliments to your team and the audits. And that's it for me.
All right, well, this is our last meeting of the year. So you know, the holiday is here. We had a wonderful weekend, this past weekend, with the light parade. And I again want to, and I know Dan mentioned, but I wanted to send out thank you to Tammy Scott in the Chamber of Commerce. Tammy worked tirelessly putting this year's event together, and it was amazing. I want to say thank you to the DPW and the Williamson Police Department for everything that they do to help get ready that day with blocking off some of the streets, getting our town looking spectacular with our lights on our light poles. Also Keller's Plaza for hosting Santa Claus. Because we're not sure if Santa's going to take time out to get down here. And Brandy Knowlton helped set that room up. And then Estate Planning and Preservation, who put the gift bags together for all the children. Historically, our former council member Sandy has been very instrumental in helping get ready for that big day here in town. So everyone else was able to come together and make sure that this was a great success. And it was. The other thing that I wanted to just mention was, last council meeting, we were able to fill four board seats this evening. We were able to fill another, which means we have three boards that are completely full with Parks and Recreation, our Planning Commission, and our ZVA. We do still have a seat open on our Downtown Development Authority. And we also have a vacancy on our Board of Review. So if there's anybody out there that's still looking to serve the community, we'd certainly appreciate someone stepping forward to fill those seats. Now also we have one vacancy on EDC TIPA still. So with that, I just want to thank everybody around this table for putting yourself out there, being here for council, being active in the community. And I just wish everybody at our city staff and DPW and our police department and NESA a very Merry Christmas. And with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting adjourned for 2019.